Good evening. Today is Wednesday, November the 19th. This is a rescheduled regular meeting of the Waterbury Board of Education. We'll start off with a silent prayer. Dr. Schwartz, do you have any remembrances tonight?
Thank you, President. In our moment of silence this evening, let us remember former members of the Waterbury Public Schools Education Community who have passed away. Carol Martino, former teacher aide, passed away on October 19th, 2025. Rosemary Petrucci, former teacher at Walsh Elementary School, passed away on October 31st, 2025. Kenneth Covielo, former crossing guard, passed away on October 31st, 2025. Frances Brennan, retired vice principal at Kennedy High School and principal at Willby High School, who also served as president of the Board of Education in the 1960s and later spent six years as the director of UConn, passed away on November 10th, 2025. Marian Morano, retired teacher at Kingsbury and Tinker Elementary Schools, passed away on November 10th, 2025.
Can our student reps for Waterbury Career Academy sing the pledge? Say the pledge. I don't want you to sing it.
Hello? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a retreat and justice for all.
And our Waterbury Career Academy student representatives are Anna Lee and Jayden.
Vice President Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Ireland?
President.
Commissioner Latoya Ireland?
Here.
Commissioner Jackson?
President.
Commissioner Lopez?
President.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Here.
Commissioner Orso?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Dorno?
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone?
President.
President Hernandez?
Here.
At this time, I yield the floor to Superintendent Schwartz.
Well, for a special night, calls for a little bit of a different look. It's been a while since I've been up here and seen you all from this purview, but if there was a night, tonight would be the night. So, good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Secretary Serrano Dorno, our Board of Ed Commissioners, and of course, our student representatives. Tonight, we celebrate how your service, President Hernandez, Secretary Serrano Dorno, and Commissioner O'Brien, how your service has shaped our schools, uplifted our students, and strengthened our community. You have given, time and time again, you have shown your passion, your unwavering belief in the power of public education. Serving on the Board of Ed is not easy, as you know. It is demanding, often thankless, but always consequential. You have been asked time and time again to make decisions that impact over 18,000 children and thousands of staff members and influence the direction of an entire school system and city. You did this not for recognition, but for a simple reason, because you care deeply about the children here in Waterbury. The countless hours you spent preparing, meeting, reading, listening, questioning, and advocating often has gone unseen. All of that time and effort, though, was not in vain. Our students benefited from your courage to ask hard questions. Our families benefited from your insistence on transparency and fairness. Our staff benefited from your support, your partnership, and your encouragement. And our entire community benefited from your belief that every single child deserves the best we can possibly offer here in Waterbury. Your service has made Waterbury Public Schools stronger. Your leadership has paved the way for continued progress, and your legacy will live on in every classroom, every achievement, and every future opportunity for our students' experience. On behalf of the entire district, thank you. Thank you for your dedication, your heart, and your unwavering belief in our mission. As you transition to your next chapter, know that your work here will continue to shape lives long after tonight. Thank you for everything you have given to this district and to the children of Waterbury. And I think that deserves a standing ovation. So, we have a few citations and awards for all of you, and then I have a few gifts to give to you at the end.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Schwartz. I'm here to actually present some citations to the outgoing commissioners, but before I do that, I'd like to actually congratulate all those elected on November 4th to actually carry this commission forward and those that will continue to serve. Your job is so very, very important. All of you actually have our most important resource and residents to actually provide for, and that's our students. There's nothing more important than our children. So, I'd like to thank all of you for what you do in that capacity. I'm going to simply say some few words, and I know the mayor is going to come up afterwards, and we will hand out the citations and awards together afterwards. But for those of you who are leaving, Commissioner O'Brien, Commissioner Serrano Dorno, Commissioner, Board President Juanita Hernandez, I want to thank you specifically because over the years, it's a partnership between the state and local government. And we've provided resources and funds for you to do your job, and I am so pleased and so happy at the results that you have taken advantage of with the resources that you've been given for our students. So, I just want to thank you all for all your dedication. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Good evening. It feels funny to be out here now on this. I want to just say all the best to Margaret, Juanita, and Melissa. We are going to miss you. I've enjoyed serving with you for two years. I know we haven't always agreed. We've been through some difficult times, but I am convinced that each one of you has always had the best interest of the City of Waterbury, the Department of Education, and most importantly, our children at the forefront of everything that you do. And I really appreciate that. I know the city appreciates it. You know, the Board of Education is a huge commitment of time and of yourself into a lot of issues that are often difficult to deal with, and I appreciate that you all wrestled with those things, and you are going to be missed. You were voices of reason, you were voices on behalf of the young people in our community. So, thank you for everything that you've done, and I hope that this just means you're moving on to other ways that you're going to serve the community, that you're not going away for good, and that we're going to continue to be able to see all of you and continue to work together. So, again, thank you for what you've done. I've enjoyed my time with you. I consider each one of you a very good friend of mine, and I wish you and all of your families nothing but the best. Thank you. Why don't the three of you come down, and we can give you the citations?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Now, the President also quite frequently came to my office, as you could imagine, the President would, and she always was enamored with my plant here, with the glass vase here. And so, she always looked at it, loved it, and we talked about it quite often. And so, the President, I can say without doubt, has been nothing but kind and generous and supportive of my superintendency, and I appreciate everything you've done. So, my plant is now your plant, and so, please enjoy.
I actually told him I was going to go into the office and steal it all day.
Thank you. Okay.
Somebody take pictures. Do you want to say a few words?
I guess I'll start. I really don't have a speech like Melissa does. And she's probably going to cry throughout the whole thing. I just want to say I appreciate you all. It was hard sometimes, but I respect you all, and I'm hoping that moving forward, the new commissioners and the ones that are still here will always remember, first and foremost, it's the students. For me, it's always been the students. I don't know anything else that is more important. We were all given a job from their parents when they elected us to do what was right for their children, and I will always stand behind that. It's never been about who liked who, who didn't like who, politics. For me, it has always been the students first and everything else second. I'm going to miss it, really, but you guys will see me. I'll be up to this podium because now I have grandchildren in the school system. So, I'll be here talking junk. Don't you worry. So, make sure you get it right. I love you all. I appreciate Central Office. Doreen still owes me a lunch. Nick still invites me over to dinner, but I never make it. Jan, I've always liked Jan. She's been quiet. Everyone else, you guys all have my heart. I really appreciate working with you guys over the last 12 years, two years, four years, whatever. Just keep the system going.
So, she's right.
I have my tissues. You guys all know that. I wear my heart on my sleeves, but I'm going to try to get over this as quickly as possible. To the Board of Ed Commissioners, my friends, newly-elected commissioners, Superintendent Dr. Schwartz, and the cabinet members, as my turn comes to an end after serving two fulfilling terms, a total of eight years, I want to express my deepest gratitude for the honor of serving alongside each of you. It has been one of the greatest privileges of my life to represent our community. Advocate for our students and help shape the vision of our school district. Throughout these years, I have witnessed incredible dedication, collaboration, and progress. Together, we have faced challenges and celebrated achievements that have made a real difference in the lives of our students and families. I am very proud of the work we've done and the meaningful days or steps we've taken toward equity, inclusion, and academic excellence. As I transition out of this role, I have shared in a separate communication several important topics and areas of focus that I hope the superintendent and the board will continue to discuss in the near future. I am not going far. I will be here with Juanita because I also have grandchildren. My hope is that our district continues to prioritize all students, including those with special needs that really hold near to our hearts, right? Those who face barriers and those whose voices are often unheard. Every student deserves the opportunity to thrive, and I have full confidence that this board and leadership will continue to uphold that commitment. To the newly-elected commissioners, welcome. You are stepping into a vital role that has the power to shape generations. Lead with compassion, courage, and an open mind, and never lose sight of why we serve our students. Thank you all for your support, collaboration, trust, and friendship throughout my time on the board. I will always be an advocate for our students and community, cheering you from the sidelines as you continue this important work. I want to thank my family for their support and their sacrifice for always just, you know, being with me and supporting me throughout the whole thing. I know it wasn't easy for them as well. Carrie, you are a rock star. Thank you. And to my camera crew, please make sure someone brings them little treats from time to time. So, I appreciate it. It's a pleasure. I love you all. God bless you guys.
Four years went fast, and I've made a lot of friends here, but a lot of them I knew before I came on.
You were a pain.
Yeah, I was a pain before, and I'm a pain during.
She was an advocate.
And I'm returning to my advocacy. I will still be around Waterbury. I will still be working with my children in this community. And now, I have a grandchild that'll be entering this school system in two years. So, you're stuck with me back here, along with these guys, facing you. And thank you. And Jackie, Latoya, I've known you. We ran together. Keep it going. These guys over here, keep it going. I just won't be bugging you as much, you think. Thank you all. And Dr. Schwartz, good luck.
I can't follow your speech.
I know. She puts us all to shame.
And I think we'd be remiss if we didn't also recognize former President Ann Sweeney, who's also in the...
It's not waterproof, Carrie.
It's okay. It's all right. It still looks good.
Communication. Commissioner Jackson, may I have a motion?
I motion to receive and place on file communication as listed.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We have no public speakers tonight. Superintendent's announcements.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President. For the superintendent's announcement, I wanted to start off by highlighting our Waterbury Public Schools Veterans Day celebrations across the district. We were able to celebrate our veterans. Obviously, we have a lot of veterans here in Waterbury and a lot of staff and students connected to veterans across the country. And so it was just heartwarming to see harsh students and how much they honored the sacrifice that veterans make for all of us to have our freedoms. And so kudos to all the schools who put on those Veteran Day celebrations. And I look forward to even expanding that for next year. Rotella is named the 2025 Exemplary School Designee. Only six schools nationwide are named Exemplary School Designee for their commitment to arts, education, creativity, and student achievement. So we are very proud of our very own Rotella Elementary School, one of six in the nation. U.S. Marine Corps celebrated its 250th birthday. Willby High School, MCJROTC, celebrated that 250th birthday with a cadet ball. Attendees dressed in formal attire for the evening. And we had Attorney General William Tong and Representative Napoli also visit and talk to the students about the importance of service. So happy birthday to our U.S. Marine Corps and congratulations to the Willby High, MCJROTC. Food drive. See, some of you said I don't dress down enough. There you go. There you go. I got the hat. There you go. Doesn't even look like me. Looks like a little kid out there.
I know.
All right. That's why I don't dress like that. That's why... But when you're trying to collect food, you know, I'll do just about anything, especially after the last few weeks where many of our families fell on difficult times as the nation struggled with filling the SNAP benefits for our students. And so really, kudos to the entire organization. This wasn't a Darren thing. This was a Waterbury Public Schools thing where we all rallied around in a very short amount of time to collect food for students. Special shout-out, especially to Jackie Davis, who really helps spearhead a lot of this work where we had the first week, it was over 600 families that asked for help over the weekends. So in less than three days-ish, we were able to give over 600 bags of food and groceries for the weekend for help sustain students over that time where they wouldn't have the breakfast and lunch at school. Next week, we had over 800 families sign up. And so the second week, the SNAP benefits were in limbo. In between that week and the next week, we did the food drives at Stop &amp; Shops. And I could say I have, you know, I'm never, I'm always impressed by Waterbury because we always show up for each other. But when I say people showed up, they really, really showed up. I mean, people were giving what they could as they walked out. You know, even families that were admittedly struggling to get some of their own food would give up a box just for somebody else. And that's Waterbury right there. And I saw so much giving, so much giving of administrators and teachers and students. We threw it out to the students to help show up and help do the drives. It was just, it was amazing to see, and you could see that second picture. That's what the room looked like after that food drive. And we were able to collect, give out between the schools and our food drive at the stuff of trucks. We were able to give out over 800 bags of groceries. And we still have more. We're gonna be giving out as we enter into the Thanksgiving week to make sure families also have something extra. And tomorrow, we're actually giving out 400 turkeys at 2:30 at Waterbury Career Academy. Thanks to a generous donor and a partnership we've been able to create. And again, Jackie and Sandra are helping organize that tomorrow for some of our families. We have some teachers on the move, two teachers from Roberto Clemente Dual Language School were able to present at the Dual Language Conference in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And their session was navigating the first year's insights and strategies from new dual-language teachers. They were asked to actually go and present this as their experts now and experts that work in our city and apply that knowledge to our students at Roberto Clemente. And so it's always amazing when our teachers get asked to present at national conferences. And so congratulations to Sora Bell and Emily. That's a nice plant, I'm telling you. And I know some of you weren't able to make the State Street Cafe last time they came down, and they cleaned house on us is what they did. But they're doing it again on November 21st. I told them to camp out at City Hall this time, to let's get some of them to give in. And so our State Street students are opening up a cafe at City Hall on November 21st from 11 to 1:00. And they're gonna be selling chocolate banana muffins, blueberry burst muffins, gluten-free treats as chocolate chip cookies, chocolate brownies, coconut macaroons. They've got oatmeal raisin cookies, chocolate espresso cookies, ricotta sugar cookies, and chocolate brownies. They also are gonna be selling roasted butternut squash and apple cider bisque for fall soups sold by the quart, frozen, perfect to keep on hand for Thanksgiving. If I am a used car salesman, that's okay because our students are amazing. You should see that. They light up. So if any of you can make it $10 per quart, gluten-free soups, if you can make it to City Hall, I am sure those are gonna go fast. So I recommend getting down there for 11 o'clock. It's not too far of a walk from the YMCA either. Just saying. I'm just putting it out there. And with that, please follow us on social media. Thank you.
Okay. President's comments. I was going to have people speak during this time, but it happened earlier. So let me just say that I have been proud to lead this Board even through the rough times. I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Dr. Ruffin and past President Ann Sweeney for all the guidance that they gave me. Again, I wish this Board nothing but the best moving forward. Never let anything get in the way of why you chose to run for this Board. You had a passion to see our children close the gap and receive the best education that the Board could give them. Continue. I'll be around. You don't have to lose my number. You can call me anytime. I just want to say Tom has been my board husband. I used to, in the beginning, kick him under the table, tell him, "I'm done. I can't do this anymore." And him and his nephew Jason used to say, "Just hang in there. Just hang in there. It'll get better." And it did get better. It got better for a long time. In the beginning, I felt isolated. So I'm telling you guys, always ask the question. No question is a stupid question. Because if you're thinking it, someone else is thinking it as well. Lean on each other at all times. Be honest. Be transparent. I walked in here with transparency and pride and respect, and I'm going to walk out with transparency, with pride, and respect. So respect each other. Talk to each other. Do what you can for our 18,000 students because they're depending on you. If there's something you don't understand, reach out. Reach out to anyone. That's what this Board is about. There's no I and team, and you guys should be a team, and you should work together. One of the main purposes of a President of a Board is to ensure that you assist the Superintendent in the things that they want to see happen in the school system. I know a lot of people thought that Darren and I were, I was very honest with Darren. I was very honest in my votes. At the end of the day, I had to look at myself in the mirror and make sure that I was doing what I felt was right. I could fall asleep knowing I did my best. So I'm leaving here knowing that I did my best. So good luck. Call me whenever, and I appreciate you all.
Commissioner Van Stone.
You didn't think I wouldn't. Madam President, Juanita Hernandez, through you. We came in together 12 years ago. We were rookies. And you didn't just kick me. When it really got tough, you actually rubbed my back. She actually tried to calm me down. Imagine that. And it worked sometime. But I also kicked you a little bit, too, because you would whisper questions to me, and I'm like, "Say it aloud." And boy, did you end up taking that advice. And you have been such a valuable member of this Board for 12 years. We've been a lot together. We've visited schools together. We did all these Cabe conventions together. And what the newer people don't know is we got out on that dance floor at the convention, too, didn't we? We were dance partners. But I'll always consider you my friend, dear friend. And I don't want to say too much. I gave the three of you a personal note that I penned today. Wasn't easy writing it, but it was how I felt from my heart that I didn't want to say out loud. So thank you so much, all three of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Van Stone. That would be the last time that I say Commissioner Van Stone.
That's true. All right. Where are we? Back on track. Number eight. Student Representatives Comments. Jaden and Aleah. Huh? Anna Lee. Oh, I'd sleep. I told you I was gonna screw it up. I'm gonna get a text from a friend of mine because whenever I screw up someone's name, she texts me and say, "Uh, that was wrong."
What are friends for?
Absolutely. I'm gonna miss that.
Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Brown, Commissioners and Superintendent Dr. Schwartz. My name is Anna Leavias, representing Waterbury Career Academy, and I'm currently in the 12th grade. I'm going to be giving you an update on our academics. In our Education and Training Academy, we are proud to share that two students have been selected to serve on the Educators Rising 2025 through 2026 CT State Cabinet. In addition, one student is serving as an Educators Rising National Ambassador, and a 2025 WCE graduate is currently serving on the Educators Rising National Cabinet. We have begun our clinical experiences this year. Our students are placed at Roberto Clemente International School, Wilson Elementary School, Maloney Magnet, and in our very own WCE pre-K classroom. We are also excited to announce that 16 of our students will be attending the CT Educators Rising Leadership Symposium on Thursday, November 20th, at Wesleyan University. For our Health Academy, our senior students are in our EMT course, were given the opportunity to go to a job site visit in Ansonia at the beginning of October. Alongside with our EMT students, seniors that are currently enrolled in our EKG class have been given the opportunity to practice a three-lead EKG to gain hands-on experience. Juniors have completed their CPR training and are now CPR certified. And our sophomores that are intro to Allied Health are currently focusing on resume writing. In the Manufacturing Academy, sophomores have learned how to read blueprints and are now working on a unit that involves interpreting actual blueprints of mechanical parts used in industry. Juniors are focused on basic machining skills, primarily using the lab and milling machine, with most students working on creating a three-step bar. Additionally, the juniors recently attended the STEM and Expo Tour and took a tour at CT State Nagatuk Valley, where several WCA robotics team members showcased a demonstration. Meanwhile, seniors are currently working on a project that utilizes the new ProTrak CNC systems on the milling machines, gaining hands-on experience with this advanced technology. In our IT and Engineering, our senior students are diving into a variety of engaging projects to build both technical skills and real-world knowledge, such as the stock market challenge. In game design, students are creating interactive worlds, developing coding abilities, and enhancing their creative problem solving. In IT Essentials, students gain hands-on experience with computer hardware, networking, cybersecurity, preparing them for industry-recognized certifications. And now for an update on clubs and activities. Our edrisings hosting a coat drive. HOSA hosted a successful food drive alongside a very successful blood drive. Our NHS club is hosting Operation Shoebox in order to bring cheer to those in need. Some of our students were given the opportunity to go to Washington DC alongside with PAL. Our Student Council is holding a Santa workshop alongside our girls' club. Freshmen, sophomores, and juniors participated in the PSATs on October 7th. HOSA hosted their annual programs, which was a big hit in the school community. Our robotics team won the first robotics competition, which was hosted at Waterbury Yukon. We recently had our annual College and Career Fair on October 15th. We had five of our athletes go to an eighth-grade class and share information about our school and their sports. Last but not least, our crochet club has partnered with PAL for the Warming Waterbury event, donating hats, scarves, sweaters, and gloves to help keep people warm this winter as part of their Warm Winter Essentials Drive.
Hi, my name is Jaden Lavasser. I'm also representing Waterbury Career Academy. I'm currently in 11th grade, and I will be updating you on our athletic and student accomplishments throughout our school. So as for sports, our boys soccer team made it to the state tournament. Both boys and girls cross-country had very competitive seasons, with the boys taking home first place at cities and the girls coming up second. Our football team beat Ansonia, which was the first time since 2008 that a city team was able to beat them. And our volleyball team hosted the NVL State and State game and won our first-ever state tournament. And for our past and upcoming events this year, juniors who are taking AP US History were given the opportunity to watch Hamilton on Broadway. Seniors from our AP Government Class will be taking a trip to speak on the Senate floor. Seniors have been on multiple college trips, with many more to come. Student Council members hosted a fall sports pep rally and are planning for a winter one. Last month, we held our annual Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, with our Black History Month celebration set to take place during February. Our Student Council is also hosting Spirit Week this week, with our homecoming dance scheduled for Friday, November 21st. Student Council is also hosting a door decorating contest in which classes compete in a friendly competition to decorate their classrooms' doors for the holiday season. We also had a big turnout for our eighth-grade open house, and as applications are due on December 5th, we've had many applications so far. Today, we had a Save a Life presentation, which will have the help of some of our students. Moving on to the student narrative. Throughout this school year, students have repeatedly commented on how cold the building has been. This issue has led to constant complaints and has affected comfort and concentration during class, as many students find it hard to stay focused and find themselves often distracted trying to stay warm due to the cold environment. Many students have also felt that they are at a disadvantage, as we are the only school in Waterbury that doesn't have a block schedule. Due to the fact that we only have seven classes in an academic year and other schools have eight, students have felt that they don't have the same opportunities as the other public schools because we all have the same graduation requirements, but not the same amount of blocks throughout the year.
Thank you.
Y'all want more work, huh? Okay. Any questions for our student reps? Thank you, ladies. Number nine. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Commissioner Van Stone?
She just likes to say this.
He told me he was gonna remove everything from the consent calendar. 9.1. Committee of the whole requests approval of a project authorization letter, PAL, to allow Waterbury Development Corporation, WDC, to manage and administer the Willby High School Football Field Renovations Project. 9.2. Request approval to participate in the repeat study, understanding how children learn to read Yale Child Study Center, Haskins Laboratories, and Yukon. Committee of the whole requests approval of the revised 25-26 school year calendar. 9.4. Request approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education 2526 Carl D. Perkins Grant. 9.5. Request approval of Amendment 1 to the service agreement with Savas Learning Company, LLC, for English Language Arts Core Programs. LLC, for English Language Arts Core Programs. Okay. 9.6, Use of School Facilities by School Organizations and/or City Departments. Commissioner Arlen? You wanted to remove something?
Yes, 9.2.
9.2, request approval to participate in the Repeat Study?
Right, yes. So before we voted...
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
9.1, 9.3, 9.4, 9.5, 9.6.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We will go back to 9.2. Commissioner Arlen?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I just needed a little more inform-
Commissioner Brown, you have to read it. 9.2. 9.2, Request Approval to Participate in the Repeat Study, Understanding How Children Learn to Read, Yale Child Study Center, Haskins Laboratory, UConn. Second. Discussion.
Thank you. So during our last meeting, we had a presentation, and I just wanted to know if there was any more information on this. I don't feel comfortable voting on it until... It wasn't clear to me, and I just wanted a little more information on that.
Is there anything specific, Commissioner, that you were looking for in terms of that the researchers didn't answer?
Well, yes. When we asked a few questions, there wasn't a lot of data or information that they can give us to see how it would be used, or the results, or the outcome.
I don't know, Jan, if you have anything to add to that. I think, for me, the researchers were trying to link how the brain learns how to read. And so basically, what they're trying to research is to best learn, to research how the brain activates certain areas, how that stimulation affects how students learn how to read. Ultimate goal would be to take that research, Waterbury students being not the full body of research, but part of the larger research study that they're doing across different schools and states, to be able to make then a determination to practitioners, like Jan, me, teachers, to say, "When you go to teach reading, we've learned that the brain activates mostly with XYZ," whatever they find out in the study. So their goal of the study is to research how the brain is activated when students are learning how to read and/or when students with specific disabilities are trying to read. Take that learning, then apply it to what can we use as practitioners then when we go to teach reading? Because it is such a complex process for the brain. And so the more we understand it, the better we could teach it. And so the ultimate goal is to help practitioners learn how to better teach reading through that brain research. I don't know, Jan, if you had anything to add to that?
That it's completely an opt-in situation, so would be parents who are interested in it. And again, as far as the MRI work, if students were not comfortable with that, or parents, they wouldn't have to do that part of it. If there's specific information or documentation you would like me to seek out, I'd be happy to do that.
What students are picked or chosen to do this? Are they just sign in?
So there's not a specific school?
Okay.
I think what happens is the information basically goes out there. They're looking for a particular age group. Was it 12 to 15? I don't have my notes with me. But it's 100% opt-in, so they're not going to choose, say, Gil Martin and work with all of the students there. And they really are interested in neurodiverse students as well. So students who are already doing well with learning, reading, and students who are struggling, so that we could try to puzzle out how to help students who struggle.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Thank you, Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Committee on Policy and Legislation, Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Item number 11.1, Request Approval of Revised Policy 5114, Discipline/Student Conduct.
Can I get a second? Discussion.
I'll just say that, I'm sorry.
Yes, I was-
I'll just say that the items under this category are making the Waterbury policies aligned with the new state legislation that was passed. So we're kind of, you know, required to implement these policies. But as far as the discipline and student conduct, I don't believe there's major changes. I think it just really outlines more of the processes and interventions. That's my understanding. And it's policy guidelines, it's much more outlined of the exact protocols that the teachers and the administrators have to use, so that it's standardized across the district. So, and it adds the framework embedded in restorative practices is kind of the additional category that's now included in the discipline policy. Anything else, Darren?
No, just this policy and all policies tonight are mandated policies, just brought in by legislation. So if anybody was wondering about that, the restorative piece is mandated through the legislation. Also good practice, but it's mandated.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Vice President Brown?
11.2, Request Approval of Revised Policy 5118.2, Educational Opportunities for Military Children.
Second.
Discussion.
Again, this is to allow a student of a military family who moves out of district. It gives the choice of the student to stay in the district and finish out the school year. So it's trying to provide the opportunity for the student to stay in the district if that is their choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. 11.3, Request Approval of Revised Policy 5131.911, Bullying/Cyber Policy and Plan.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, this one, Commissioner Van Stone?
Thank you, Madam President. Through you. On this policy, what bothers me a little bit is taking bullying out of the title. I did look up Section 170 for all of these items today, and I had some other questions that I decided not to ask on the ones already gone by, but I do have some later. But taking bullying out of this title bothers me because I fight all the time for the kids that are being bullied, not for the bullies. And most of this policy just talks about the bullies. And we don't talk enough about those being bullied. And we leave it behind a little bit. But as far as taking it out of the title, the other concern I have is I went to our policies online. And when you go to the search engine within our policies, the only thing it can search is the title name. It does not search into the policy for any keywords that are in the policy. So now if one of our parents, who have already come to us saying they have trouble finding the form to fill out, will now search bullying in our policies and find nothing. It will say, "Nothing found." I used a bunch of keywords in other policies, and everything came back, "Nothing found." So I'm very concerned that a parent cannot go, or a student, cannot go into our policy, search bullying, and be told, "Nothing found." So we need to fix that search engine. Because, you know, to say it actually says, "Search Keyword." No, you're searching titles. So if we're really gonna search keywords, and we must, or not even have a search engine. Because this title saying "School Climate," which I know is the buzzword, we'll change that in another four or five years, I'm sure. But "School Climate" could be every policy we have. You know, and now we're changing bullying to "School Climate." So I'm gonna vote yes on it. I'm not gonna, you know, because the policy is just bringing us up to date with the state mandates. But I do think we need to take a look at our IT system and fix that search engine to find text, not just titles. Thank you.
I would just also add, in building on what Commissioner Van Stone said, is that there still will be a separate policy and protocol for bullying as such. But as you're saying, it's not specifically accessible at this point. And the legislature has kind of an umbrella of policy now, called Connecticut School Climate Policy and Regulations, which Jackie Davis is our expert now on all of the new requirements. So this is a lot. This is a lot. This is a big policy change. And I think it really will, when it's implemented and standardized, that every school will embrace it. And I think everybody will be on the same page.
Vice President Brown, can you reread the motion?
I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve revised policy 5131.911, Bullying/Cyber Policy and Plan, and to rename policy to Connecticut School Climate Policy Regulations.
Thank you. Dr. Schwartz?
Well, thank you. Yeah, we did discuss that, Commissioner Van Stone, at the Policy Committee. I mean, we, many of us share the concern. Again, this specific policy is the exact Cabe model that came out. And there has been a lot of changes over this in the last legislative session. And I think they were thinking of trying to reduce all the paperwork and in conversations with the State Department and a few others. You know, it became so much about people wanting other students to be bullied. They forgot the bigger picture of just creating a positive school climate and then that restorative piece that goes with students. So again, this is a mandate. It doesn't mean we all necessarily agree or have strong opinions about it. I know we all do. Especially if a student is getting bullied, we want to make sure that's clear. And I'll look into that search engine for you, Commissioner Van Stone. I use the search engine on the homepage. I get six results for it when I hit bully, but I think, to your point, I think the search engine, when it comes to policies, is a different search engine than on the homepage. And so I can certainly talk to our webmaster about that and fix that for us.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. 11.4, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the Revised Policy 5141.25, Accommodating Students with Food Allergies, and rename the policy "Accommodating Students with Special Dietary Needs."
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 11.5, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve new policy 5142, School Safety and Security Plan.
Second.
All, discussion?
Yes, Dr. Schwartz, can you just give us a little more details of the School Safety and Security Plan?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. So, you know, this is, we don't have a policy right now on this, although we practice it. And so we thought it important for this to be in. And it was also a mandated policy, so it was good timing. However, by November 1st, we must hand in a report to our District Regional Coordinator for the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, our annual school security and safety plans. Obviously, that's a very voluminous piece of work. It's important to keep that in the right hands. Obviously, there's sensitive material in that as well. And if we don't hand it in by November 1st, we aren't eligible for certain grants. So we always hit that November 1st deadline, of course. And we thought it important that no matter who sits in the chairs, whether Board or Superintendent, that it was good for us to have this as a Board policy to make sure that the district's always eligible for this. And in that voluminous piece of work are also everything from, you know, situations where if it's an athletic event, what's our protocol for an athletic event in the middle of a field somewhere? You know, do we have the proper equipment nearby? Or do we know what the protocol is for coaches to go and get that equipment? It ranges from that all the way to, we saw a bear outside, and to the most serious incidents, such as similar to what we experienced at Career Academy last week, which was the firearm or the gun that was eventually found within the school. And it really lays out our policies and protocols. But I also want to be clear that those policies and protocols are also, they can't be read word-for-word either, because in real-time situations, they present differently. And so, for example, in this situation, you know, administration were directly on the phone with Mike Tripp, who's our SRO coordinator with the Waterbury Police Department, and in collaboration with Dan Berry, talking about, "Okay, what have you heard? What do you definitively know? What do you not know? And then let's move with this type of movement. Let's bring another SRO in just in case there is something threatening at the school." I could tell you that watching the video and listening to the reports and reading the reports, that it was swiftly acted upon once that information was provided from a student to the SRO and that there was a quick turnover in identifying the student and then identifying the weapon in the school. And obviously, those consequences are already laid out in our protocols for what happens with those students. And so, you know, the system kept students safe, although it's always a serious, and we never want to see any sort of instrument in the school that could do harm, never mind a firearm, obviously, and a gun. And then afterwards, when I went up there that day, I did talk to the administration about making sure they bring students together. That might not be in our protocol, but we always do kind of list discussion after any major event. What could we do differently? You know, do our policies really line up to how we actually did this thing right here? And then if not, maybe we should adjust the wording. For in this case, we had some questions about shelter in place versus lockdown. And so we looked at that, and we said, "It's a little too rigid." Because when you don't know if something's happening, what do you go into? And so we are always constantly learning. We're constantly adjusting. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done up to this point. But none of us feel like you could ever do enough, like there's always something to learn from. And so in that situation and other situations, we consistently meet, and I know Nick Albini, our Chief Operating Officer, meets frequently with Dan and goes over our security protocols and continues to work on security measures. For example, this year with addition of identity metrics and other things that we're doing in the schools. So it's a voluminous piece of work, but it also helps guide us on what we do and it helps teach us what we should and shouldn't do in the future and constantly learning. So it's an important piece for us.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. 11.6, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revisions to and replacement of Policy 6142.101, Student Nutrition and Physical Activity. physical activity, school wellness as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown.
Thank you, Madam President. Item 11.7, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve new policy 6161.12, library material review and reconsideration.
Second.
Discussion.
I would just say that a lot of effort went into this. This codifies the protocols and actually makes it very clear if you're opposed to any curriculum, or any books, or displays, or anything, that there is a process, and there will be a review board established to kind of review the complaints. If you look at the policy, they actually have a form that people can fill out, and they have, you know, templates there. So it's a very tight protocol for the public, as well as staff and students, to apply for a revisit of these materials.
Just to add on to that, yes, it's really important for us to have this policy and protocol in place, even though we haven't faced it often here. I know another, a lot of communities, they have faced this, and it's great to have a protocol, and better to be proactive, or if it does happen, it doesn't put it just on the library, media, teacher, or the principal to solve this. The committee is formed. They get to decide on it, and there's a timeline to it. I do want to point out, Commissioner, the form and everything was a sample of a template of what we could use. We did not put that form necessarily in the policy itself, because if we have to change a word on the form, then we have to change the whole policy. So what, but we will-
It's an example.
Correct. We will have a procedure in place for people to fill out, and it will be accessible and searchable on the website.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Vice President Brown. 11.8.
Yep, thank you. I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve new policy 6161.13, library collection development and maintenance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. 11.9, Vice President Brown.
Thank you, Madam President.
Nope.
Nine. Right?
Yes.
Yeah. Item 11.9, I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve new policy 6161.14, library display and program.
Second.
Commissioner Van Stone.
Last time. Thank you, Madam President. Through you. I just wanted to get some clarification. I did go to the PA 25-168 on the state website. However, it's about 800 pages long, because it's a lot more than just this. So for one sentence that I'm going to ask about, I stopped looking for it. I just wanted to check, in this for us, it's a library display review and reconsideration procedure. And when it comes to putting a committee together, the review, something that's on display. And so it's three, letter D. And it says, "A representative from local or regional Board of Education." Now, we have three magnet schools. Is this policy allowing us to go out to the 50-whatever towns that send kids to our magnet schools?
No, I think because it's the K policy, it would do the slash there. But obviously, because we have a local board, we could-
Can't.
We could, obviously, if it's a local-
An extra vision.
I'm sorry?
An extra vision. I would love to take regional out of it. I just don't want it to be misleading to someone who may think they're, they got a right to one of our committees.
I think we can do that.
I think we could take liberty for one, one or two words. I don't think the state's going to take away our grants for doing something like that.
Yeah, I agree.
So. I just don't want it to be misled to-
You wouldn't want me to bring in an entire different Board of Education to make decisions?
Well, I've met the Regional Board of Education's at my legislative breakfast, and no.
I understand. I understand.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Is that a friendly amendment, she said?
A friendly one for down the line, whenever we revise the policy. I'm not looking to make a motion to change anything. I wouldn't do that. I won't either, last night.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item number 12. Commissioner Arlen, Latoya Arlen, I apologize.
I move that the Waterbury Board of Education approve the use of school facilities in or waiver requests of various groups and organizations as listed, subject to fees and insurance as required.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Motion carries. Superintendent's notification to the board. Commissioner Van Stone, may I have a motion?
I gotta find it on my list. Is it on there?
Yep.
I motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's notification to the board, and that would be items 13.1 through 13.7.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Secretary Serrano, do I have any committee chair reports?
No, ma'am.
I don't have a report, but I do have a question. Is that okay?
Commissioner Orso.
Has there been any arrangements yet for the swearing-in ceremonies?
I actually received some sort of invite on December 1st to be at Kennedy High School at-
A sheriff's call will be going out tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
I'll be looking forward to it.
Oh, I can see.
Usually want to answer that call.
Secretary Serrano, may I have a motion to adjourn?
My pleasure. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Woo!
Sign your, sign your-
Nice reporting. Waterbury Career Academy is awesome.
Here you go.